Good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you all for joining us for this second board meeting of the month of June 2021. Uh, I call us now to order. We've established a quorum. Uh, we are eight of nine here. Uh, so we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, Mr. Chris Tinsen, man of the hour, you lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will begin with some awards and recognitions. Dr. Battle?
Good evening, Chairman Bugs, members of the board, and Dr. Battle. My name is Lindsay Kimery, and I'm the coordinator of library services. MNPS received a $500,000 grant for the previous school year to have gold-level subscriptions to Chess Kid for all K-4 students. Chess Kid is an educational gaming app that provides tools to help kids learn and improve their chess skills and to engage with a game that reinforces critical thinking, problem-solving, and strategy. As a district, we held two Week of Chess events, one in November and one in February, in which students were encouraged to engage in learning the game of chess and play against other students in their school. They all made it. The MNPS Chess Bee was held May 20th with 42 schools and 119 students participating. The top three winners in each grade level received a plaque and a chess set. And our winners here received tuition for the Nashville Chess Center camp this summer. And the success of Chess Kid would not have been possible without our leaders in the schools running the clubs, leading Hour of Chess, and running the Chess Bee. And it would also not have been possible without our Nashville Chess Center volunteers, one of which is here tonight, Chris Prosser. He's a former MNPS teacher as well. And together through their leadership, 17,000 MNPS elementary students logged into Chess Kid this year, completed over 66,500 lessons, 114,000 puzzles, and played over 320,000 games of chess. So at this time, I'd like to recognize the winners of our district-wide Chess Bee. Okay, first up, we have Kreshav Karthik, student at Granberry. He is our kindergarten winner. Kreshav? Kreshav's Chess Kid coach is Dr. Marla Streit. Okay, our next winner is Said Hozia, student at Harpeth Valley Elementary. He's our first-grade champion. His sponsor is librarian Denise Tabscott. Our second-grade champion is Arush Khati from Creve Hall Elementary. Um, his, his sponsor is fourth-grade teacher Kenneth Knight. Um, our third-grade champion is Alexander Osen. He is unable to be with us tonight. And he is a student at Harpeth Valley, and his sponsor is also Ms. Denise Tabscott. Our fourth-grade champion is Grayson Rajio, student at Percy Priest. And his sponsor is volunteer Igor Zislin. So at this time, I invite our winners and any coaches, volunteers, or administrators present to join us for a photo. Thank you for your time. Do you guys face that way? Good job, guys.
Congratulations.
Ladies, the school board reps, too.
We'll get you copies of pictures. I'll, I'll, I'll let everybody copy.
Book to the banker, the candlestick maker.
Everybody copies.
Great job, guys.
Congratulations.
We just go home now. But then we're so in the world here. Can't we just leave on this note? We've got a billion dollars and the cutest kids in the world.
Yes.
Let's just go home.
Yep.
Off to the side.
That was the high point. We at, we at school, okay? Bye.
Congratulations again, chess winners. What a great way to begin our, our meeting. We will move on to the consent agenda. Are there any amendments to the consent agenda as listed?
Yes, I'd like to pull 10 and 16.
All right, so that's B-10 Curriculum Associates LLC and B-16 Lexia Learning Systems. Anything else? All right, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended?
We have approval of the consent agenda as amended.
There's second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please raise your hand. All right, consent agenda approved. We'll begin, or I will accept the motion on B-10 Curriculum Associates LLC.
Can, may I make my motion to do both 10 and 16?
Uh, sure.
Okay. I move that we approve, um, B-10 and B-16. Second.
All right, over for discussion.
All right, so my question is, is both of these pro, both of these programs are done currently online through our computers, particularly now that we're a one-on-one district? So my question is, is are we going to continue to use them on a daily basis till 2023?
Uh, thank you for your question, Ms. Elrod. I'm going to invite, um, uh, David Williams, our Executive Officer of Curriculum Instruction, to respond to your question. Thank you.
Thanks.
Great, thanks, Chris. Um, thank you for the question. These programs were selected, uh, for the district during the pandemic, but both include, or all of our intervention programs include, per the state RTI manual, an online component and an in-person component. So there's got to be some direct instruction. This year, the direct instruction was, would have been provided by the teacher. So it's a blended approach where there's a computer and online component and teacher-direct instruction. So all of our intervention programs must include both components. So while we intend to continue to use that this year, there will be the online component and the teacher-directed component, it's just they will be in person now.
Okay. Is the plan for students to still be taking their computers back and forth to school on a daily basis?
Generally, yes.
Okay. Okay. Is there opportunity for us to have students leave their computers at the school for these types of programs so that there's less damage to them and that kind of thing?
Um, we'll, we'll work out some of the details, particularly with our blended learning plan, about what that could look like. We, we think that to leverage the technology, the best way that students will need to transport so they can make use of them at home, whether at home or in a, uh, other support environment, right, uh, after school, so that they can make use of them. Generally speaking, for the lower grades, that's where, it may not be every single day, and it could be recommended certain days that, uh, they go home.
Got it. And then my last question, which I receive from time to time, are, is this the only intervention that we're currently using, or what other interventions are we using?
So this is the complete list of all the intervention programs that the board has approved, starting in the RFP that we ran in 2018. The yellow that I have here just for my notes are the ones that are new, that were the contract, because once we identified this list in 2018 and the board began approving these, uh, programs in the spring of 2019, um, once we had the list, we know we have to refresh as programs roll off or programs roll on. Because this identifies the skill levels and intensity levels, as well as the grade levels, a program may, for example, go from being a K-5 program to a K-8 program. And if that happened after we ran the RFP, we'd need a, a way to refresh that. So we just actually concluded an RFP in the spring to make sure that this list is the most up-to-date. And so the yellow that I have here includes, uh, the new programs, but all of the programs are available for schools.
Got it. Okay.
And I'm happy to provide this list to, to you, Ms. Elrod, or any, anyone else.
That would be helpful, just so I can speak exactly to sometimes that question.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
We'll get it, we'll get it out to you no later than the end of the week.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Williams. And Dr. Battle, I have no further questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Williams.
All right, uh, Ms. Elrod, would you restate your motion?
Yes, my motion was to approve, um, the consent agenda shown as B-10 and B-16.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please raise your hand. All right, it unanimously passes. We will now move on. So the budget. I believe I'll kick this to Budget Chair, Mr. Peter Player Peters.
Um, we just had our Budget and Finance meeting prior to this meeting. Um, and we had passed in Budget and Finance Committee unanimously the amended budget for, um, the amended operating budget for 2021, 2022. Um, and, um, well, first, I make a motion to approve, uh, the amended operating, the revised operating budget for 2021, 2022.
Second.
All right, it's been first and seconded.
Um, and I would like to say, um, also just kind of reiterate some of the words that I said earlier, but just really thanking the council, the mayor's office for this historic budget. Um, first, it started with, um, Mayor Cooper, um, really putting historic investment with teachers and really, um, continuing the conversation that we started last year, prior to the pandemic, of studying teachers' pay and making sure teachers are the best-paid teachers in the state to really help with recruitment. We've had a long discussion about how to recruit teachers, how to retain teachers. And this is, um, putting, um, resources where our commitment is to do that and be able to really kind of even be more aggressive and more diligent and to be able to keep the best and recruit the best teacher by being the best teachers in the state. Um, and so we want to thank Mayor Cooper for that effort and thank Mr. Robert Fisher, who's in the audience, uh, for his work with Mr. Clay and Dr. Battle, um, in those conversations to make sure that we could really make this come to fruition. So we'd like to thank you for your hard work to really make that happen. Um, and then also to the council, who really, um, really continued the conversation. As I said, Dr. Battle, we transformed the budget conversation about what it looks like to have an aspirational budget. The community asked for an aspirational budget, and she followed through what it truly costs to educate children, and we really saw that. And really see the community come together and say, this is what our priorities are. This is our input in the democratic process to make that happen. Um, I know from personal experience, I know the support staff employees had a long conversation over the years about having more, um, professional development days to be sure they can stand by their teachers and really help educate the children in the classroom. If you've ever been in a classroom with a parent pro, you see their one-on-one with the students, talking to the students, assisting the teachers right beside each other to make sure students get the quality education that they had. And this gives them more resources to do that. As Dr. Battle's mission is to make every student known, this is the second layer to making sure that happens. And so really like to thank Councilwoman Porterfield for really pushing that effort, her background and her experience as a classroom teacher, understanding the role of a parent pro, and we understand they need reinforcement, they need encouragement, and they need, um, professional support to help really educate children in the classroom on a regular basis. And so, um, and I just want to thank my colleagues with it. As we said, this is the first time in a long time we do not have to make a budget reduction. And that is a very refreshing place to be, that we're having a conversation of what does it take to do forward, to be proactive, and to put new programs in place for the first time, um, in a long time about this is what we mean as community, putting our children first. So this really, this continuing like the entire community, being part of the, the democratic process, being part of the conversation, supporting us as a board, supporting Dr. Battle, and really seeing this is how we invest in our children, and this is also we invest in our employees who support our children, and it takes everyone to educate a child, from a teacher to support staff to administration and as a board. Um, and so I just really want to thank that. Thank Mr. North for really going through the process, the council process, and going through all the budget and work sessions to understand what's going on, answer the questions from the council members. That's sometimes not an easy task to field questions from 40 different council members at one time and being one person. I know it could be, from personal experience, it could be an interesting task sometimes, but he, he did it well. So, um, I just want to thank everyone with that, and, um, that's all I have.
Thank you. All right, uh, any other discussion? All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? And this passes unanimously. Thank you again, Mrs. Player Peters, Dr. Battle and staff. All right, we'll move on to our director's report.
Thank you, Chair Bugs, Vice Chair Elrod, board members. Um, I'll just start by saying it was exciting, um, to celebrate, um, our youngest students today in person, um, and I'm looking forward to doing much more of that in the weeks and months to come. Just as the 2020-21 school year looked a little, a lot different for students and staff, so too is this summer. With our building staying alive throughout the month of June and the district teaming with energy and enthusiasm for learning and engagement, more than 16,000 students signed up to be a part of the Promising Scholars Program or to take part in credit recovery through our high schools. We've had unexpected bright spots from Promising Scholars experiences. Schools serving as Promising Scholar sites are bringing together students and teachers from across our district, with some of them having students and teachers from as many as 10 or more different schools under one roof, helping to build and strengthen our MNPS community spirit. We've heard from teachers who appreciate the opportunity to walk, work in smaller classroom sizes so they can give students a personalized attention and support they need to accelerate learning growth. One of our teacher leads at Charlotte Park Elementary said that, "Throughout the school, students are laughing and smiling in the hallways and in classrooms. So many are truly blossoming as they receive more individualized attention than the regular school year allows." We've seen so many students engaged in fun activities and learning opportunities. Our teacher leads at Thomas Edison said that string and physical activities brings another level of excitement for our students through experiments, building models, dancing, coding, and competitive fun. Edison Promising Scholars are highlighted and awarded each day as a motivation to keep behavior managed and focused on learning. It is also a great opportunity for teachers to take a stronger leadership role in their school. And we've heard from at least one aspiring administrator at Bellevue Middle that this has been the most effective way to prepare them for stepping into an administrative position. And they have learned more than ever it would have, and they would have in a grad school or new leader academy. I know that our team has discussed a great deal about the benefit of this program in helping us to identify and support candidates for our principal leadership pipeline in the years to come. We're looking forward to closing out this experience strong on July 2nd and taking the feedback and lessons learned from this pioneering year to create an even better Promising Program in 2022. Next slide, please. Principal Landing was the opportunity for principals to close out the year strong by reflecting on the lessons learned. During this time, principals and their network peers discuss the innovative systems and practices that emerged in response to what was required to meet the academic and SEL needs for MNPS students in a non-traditional year. Additionally, executive directors joined in conversations with principals about the district's new leadership framework, which you see on this slide, purposeful community, and action planning for the upcoming school year. In collaboration with Nashville Public Education Foundation, or MPEF, we have created a new leadership framework that is one of my signature initiatives, which will be used across the district to ensure that leaders at all levels are leading from a shared sense of purpose and using common leadership practices. Principals were introduced to this new framework and given opportunities to reflect on how to strengthen and align their leadership practices to the framework. Regarding purposeful community, principals focus on building relationships in their networks through identifying the four pillars of purposeful community, which are common purpose, assets, agreed-upon processes, and collective efficacy. Because we recognize that this is going to take networks of principals to pursue the district's north star of becoming the premier large urban school district in Tennessee and beyond. We prioritize this time of team and relationship building during Principal Landing. Then we focus also on our action planning tool, where principals are thinking about how to best prepare for the next year. This is something that they always do. And they now have been equipped with an action planning tool that will assist them in those preparations. This tool will allow principals to look at their data and set goals on how to help students achieve their academic outcomes. This year's Principal Landing was successful, and it positions school-based and support hub leaders to enter Principal Splash energized and excited about continuing to build relationships and planning for the district's next set of goals in their networks across the district. Now briefly, I want to talk to you a little bit about our Principal Splash that followed our Principal Landing. Our Principal Splash retreat was hosted by Alman Nashville and allowed for team-building and planning to find common bonds and themes for where we are as a school district across tiers, as well as where we want to be to offer the best possible experiences for students and families who choose MNPS. We're going to be further defining and refining these concepts in the coming weeks and months in consultation with our principals and our stakeholders. But during this retreat, we identified the following consistent themes: opportunities and desired outcomes at the school and district levels. For the guaranteed experience at the elementary level, we heard from principals that the key to a great education starts with providing families with a safe, welcoming environment where families will be comfortable and trusting their children to our care. It means defining and offering experiential opportunity, experiential learning opportunities to give students those hands-on experiences that take learning to the next level. We do that by ensuring we have high-quality, effective teachers in our classrooms and connecting with community partners to support the work of our schools. We also heard that we need great transition planning between grade levels and schools, both in terms of transitioning to the next level and factoring in our high mobility rate of students and families in the district. In our middle schools, a personalized experience means that we increase the academic rigor to accelerate learning and ensure students have exposure to real-world learning opportunities that will help them take the theoretical into practical terms as to how their education will apply to their future. This also means we develop cultures of belonging and truly ensure that every student is known by identifying and developing the identities, interests, and intellect of the kids we serve. The applied experience in high school focuses on, again, those real-world experiences through internships and opportunities for all students to engage outside the classroom in areas that interest them and excite their passion for learning. It means emphasizing the development of critical thinking skills and empathy so students are prepared for life after high school. And that means supporting students in identifying their preferred post-secondary pathways so they can launch right into that college or career opportunity. We also took some time to meet with all principals to talk about the reimagined experience and how the metro schools' reimagined initiative aligns to our clusters can be used to strengthen schools and student experiences. This starts with building stronger, meaningful relationships between principals across tiers and their individual clusters, increasing opportunities for students to engage in the arts and music, and empowering parents to engage in their school community, which will lead to stronger cluster outcomes. Coming out of the three days of principal meetings, our support hub leadership team came away with some important next steps for us to ensure our school's success. Connecting with principals to further refine definitions for the guaranteed, personalized, and applied experiences, creating more time and space for principals to meet in tiers and clusters for the reimagined work, train our support hub personnel on how to best support school-based leaders, continue to create opportunities to listen and learn from principals to ensure continuous improvement all across the district. What I love most about our Principal Splash event is that we were able to give space to principals to share their hopes, dreams, their frustrations, their aspirations, and desires for how they can best serve the students and how we and the support hub can best help them do that. I'm grateful to all of our principal leaders who participated and look forward to continuing to work together to offer the best possible experience for all of our students. Finally, I want to, once again, and I'm just going to echo, uh, the words of, um, Ms. Frida Player Peters, um, thank Mayor John Cooper, the Metro Council, especially our Budget Chair, um, Kwanzea Tooms, as well as this Board of Education for the historic investment and vote of confidence in Metro Nashville Public Schools. Because of the additional funds that are being allocated towards our district, our teachers will now be the best in state for educator pay, helping us to retain and recruit great teachers who are the essential component of a great education. Further support our support staff through a step increase and 2% COLA, bringing our school-based support staff into the classrooms when teachers are working in service, and building up the social, emotional, and mental health supports for students through advocacy centers at all of our elementary schools, and additional school psychologists needed to help children cope with traumas experienced when at home or in school. We are so fortunate to live in a city that has doubled down on the commitment to public education, and I look forward to working with this board and our stakeholders to faithfully implement these new investments. Thank you, and I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Bugs.
Thank you so much for that, Dr. Battle. Do I have any questions?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Ms. Player Peters.
And just to piggyback on what Dr. Battle said, really have to thank, and I failed to do this earlier, um, Council Lady Tooms of really just, um, introducing this early in her substitute budget and really investing early and taking the leadership. But more, but more importantly, what she did prior to the budget process of really engaging us on a regular basis and asking the questions about the, how we educate our children, the programs that we have, and really doing the deep digging of what we're doing and how we're spending our money efficiently, um, and understanding the whole process that we can get to the historic moment that, um, prior budget chairs did not do. And I just want to honor, um, just Councilwoman Tooms for really just being very thoughtful of asking us the tough questions, but us showing that we can answer the tough questions and that we're being transparent and be able to trust us with that funding and that she was able to put that in her substitute budget. So I just want to thank you for acknowledging that and just put a finer point on it.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, well, thank you, Dr. Battle, again, and to your staff. We'll move on to announcements. We'll begin with Dr. Gentry.
I, I don't think I have any.
All right.
They have, but I probably forgot them.
That's all right. There's always a next time. Mrs. Pupa Walker?
I want to, um, thank all of the staff from, uh, across the district that are coming in and helping with Promising Scholars, all the planning, all of the details, um, making, you know, as I think, it might have been Hank told me, you know, it's basically one of, our Promising Scholars is the size of like a mid-sized district in Tennessee, just Promising Scholars, right? And so putting that on after the year that we had, um, is a monumental lift. And so I'm just really, really grateful to everybody who, who pulled that off and, um, anyway, and the credit recovery, too, which I know is a big deal. Also want to thank Frida Player Peters for her leadership on getting this budget to fruition and passage and masterfully done, and thank the council and mayor. Also want to say there's nine days left for seniors, graduated seniors, to complete their eight hours of community service by July 1st to keep their eligibility for Promising, for Tennessee Promise. If you know of some seniors, make sure they've done their community service. And finally, very, very excited about the announcement of Avenez, Orhale, and Angelie Kimbo to be our new student board members. So excited to have them join us, really grateful to Megan Mangram for the thoughtful article about them and meeting with them. And I just think they're going to bring so much to this, uh, to this board and really grateful for all the support on that. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Little?
Yep, um, just congratulate, uh, Mr. Frederick Burnett became the new head coach of football at McGavick. Uh, we had a vacancy for a while, so that was good to really see. And also, congratulations to the Grayson family again from Percy Priest, uh, for being the chess champion.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Elrod?
Thank you. To echo Ms. Jeanne Pupa Walker, um, I am so appreciative to Haywood, Cole, and Tusculum, the schools in my district that have been, uh, putting on Promising Scholars, of course, are surrounding districts as well, as I know Norman Binkley in particular has a lot of people within district, too, that have gone over to Norman Binkley to receive their Promising Scholars, uh, summer experience. I'm not surprised by the information that we just received. Uh, we've, we're getting a lot of feedback that it's a great admin- We're getting a lot of feedback that it's a great admin experience, as it has been a huge amount of work, I can tell not only by the support hub, but also by our teachers, particularly our lead teachers at those individual schools. Just organizing the school hookup line is a lot of work, guys. So I really appreciate all that work, and I was coming to a close on that on July 2, and I hope that we can continue to do this. I think it's been a really good experience. Other than that, I hope everyone has a continued safe summer. And I congratulate both the Creve Hall and Granberry Chess winners. That kindergartner y'all is so cute.
Thank you. Mrs. Player Peters?
Yes, I don't know if anyone heard the breaking news, but the tax referendum will not be on the ballot come July. And as Budget and Finance Chair, I want to take the personal privilege of really saying the devastating impact that could have had on our schools. We just had a discussion about the historic investment. And one thing I did mention during the Budget and Finance meeting, that July 1, we do not get a cash effusion of $1 billion to fund our school for the rest of the year. That funding comes in installments. It comes in installments from the retailer to the state, down to Metro Government, then to us. It's a process. And just like your personal salary, you don't get your salary January 1 of whatever your annual income is, and then you pay your bills and your, you know, everything from that one cash. It's the same thing that happened. And if this referendum were to pass, the devastating effects that we just sat here and brought about, there was a chance that that would have been adjustment. We just made an adjustment during Budget and Finance about the adjustment we had to do for this current operating year because of the tax receipts that we've received coming out of the pandemic in a safe way. And that could have easily happened if this referendum would have got to the ballot and passed as technical consequence that would have happened. We might be having a totally different discussion, literally nine months from now, about reductions that we have to say. We're just saying that it was a relief that we did not have to make the reductions in this one. And so to really understand how we fund education has to be a community conversation with true facts and true understanding of the budgetary process and the impact that it has, and that we would have to do that in a full, thoughtful, long-term conversation, and that we cannot make quick judgment decisions on how we fund our city and more importantly, how we fund our education. And so as we talk about how we continue with our aspirational budget, what it takes for the investment, the conversations and the tasks on the mayor's office, the conversations and tasks that has to happen to Metro Council and then also with us, is not an easy task. If you have been following us, the conversations we have had just through this operating budget year of what we had to do to make sure it's fun has not been easy until we got towards, out of the pandemic and walking into it. It was a complete partnership with the mayor's office and a complete partnership with the council. As we're having conversations with the state, with the BEP formula, with the vouchers and things like that, it's a complicated process. And when you take one stool, one leg of that stool out of the process, it makes it that much more difficult to fund schools. So as we continue to have a conversation of how we fund schools, how we engage with all levels of government, from the federal, state, and local, we as a community needs to have that conversation in a very thoughtful, strategic way and understanding the true impact of that. And so as citizens, as we go through this growth as a new city, as more people come into the city, as we educate new kids and new parents and people have families into the city, we have to have a continued conversation as we grow as a city. How do we grow our education funding streams? And then also how those streams have an impact on our budget process. So I would just like to thank this Judge Perkins for having, just being thoughtful in his legal aspects of it, and then also just those in the community who continue to have that conversation about what it takes to educate our children and the role it has to do in the governmental processes that takes to educate our children. I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Player Peters. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Mrs. Masters?
I'll just say Happy Pride Month and that I am proud to be serving in a district that values all of our children and all of our employees. And I think that's my only announcement for today.
Thank you. And Mrs. Tyler?
I also want to say Happy Pride Month, and I want to reiterate the thanks to Robert Fisher and Mayor Cooper and everybody that's walked with us every step of the way to make sure that we can have the things that we need to educate our students properly. And one last thing, just a thanks to Dr. Battle and her team, because I'm not sure how many people realize that our summer school plan was not what it is now originally, and we spent a lot of time setting it up in one way. And when the legislation changed, they had to turn on a dime and change everything about the way that they implemented and did the Promising Scholars Program. So the turnaround time was very tight. It was asking a lot, a super-heavy lift of people throughout the district. So thank you, guys, for all of the work that you did to make sure that things would get to where they are, where I hear students saying, I'm so excited, I can't wait to go back next week, and to hear the joy from teachers who are really enjoying that smaller class size to get to work with the students. And so I've been very pleased with what we've been able to do, and it makes me so excited about next year's Promising Scholars, because if we have this much more time to plan, what else could we do? So I'm very pleased. Thank you very much.
Thank you. My only announcement is that on this past Thursday, we had a community meeting to discuss the use of the Buena Vista Building. We had a few technical issues, but it was also not really well-attended. And so we want to give the community another chance to offer their thoughts and their feedback, so we'll be looking to host another potentially, potential in-person meeting. Dr. Gentry?
That's what I was going to say.
Yep, we're on the same wavelength. So yes, please be looking for updates there. Aside from that, we have a retreat that will tentatively be held on Thursday, July 22. I told you that's the day that the Tennessee State Board meets, and we're hoping to be able to host them for lunch. But I'm going to ask Mrs. Bobo to send out a calendar invite just to hold it for now, and I'll give you all details as we develop them.
I just want to add a couple of things. So the meeting to discuss Buena Vista, my request is that it is an in-person meeting, not potentially. We did have internet failure and some other challenges, and so this is a very important piece of property that means a lot to the people in that community, so I want to make sure that we do plan for that to be an in-person meeting. We've got a couple of others scheduled already. September 16 is the date for Robert Lillard, and October 7 is the date for Jolton. And those are already planned to be in-person meetings that will take place. And we still need to work on the schedule for Old Brick Church Middle School. But we want to just ask for some help in whatever we need to do to get it better publicized so that we can get the kind of attendance and input that we need. I think the presentation that you guys pulled together was really good, a lot of great, exciting options for the building, but we do want to give the community ample opportunity to wait.
So yeah, we'll send out details around that next meeting.
Oh, and one more thing.
Go right ahead.
The National Museum of African-American Music and Art had their formal dedication and grand opening this Saturday, June 19. It was absolutely amazing. I don't know if anyone else got a chance to be there, there were a lot of individuals, but I just want to congratulate Henry Hicks and his team for pulling that off. If you've been here for at least 10 years, you've been a part of that journey to get that facility opened, and it is absolutely amazing. I'm sure that it is already factored in to potential field trips and other collaborations. Say yes. Somebody say yes.
I'm snapping.
Okay, I heard it, I felt a yes. I felt a yes. For our students to tell the story that often gets squashed around the contributions of African-Americans to various aspects of American culture. And so this is just a prime jewel. Even though it's focused on music and art, they are definitely amenable to hosting conversations and educational opportunities to broaden the perspective and understanding of what the history of African-Americans in this country has actually been, critical race theory or not.
Well, you know what? On that note, be there no further business. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.